I did confess to Aaron.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting in Nevada City Council to order. And I get roll call.
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Dana Nelson.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skex.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, we had a request to remove item I from the agenda tonight.
I know not remove it from the agenda, just remove it from the sun's agenda.
Yeah, from the consent agenda, I apologize.
I moved to approve the agenda with four I removed for separate consideration. Or was it for separate consideration?
Yeah, separate consideration.
Okay, then yes, that's why.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Who we missing?
Oh, mine is not popped up yet. Let me try reloading.
Sorry.
Yeah. It is showing up closed on mine. Refresh.
Refresh it?
Yeah, let me try it again.
Why does it say?
Hey, there you are.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Thank you.
Approved. Moving on to item four, approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Please vote. Moving on to the public forum.
What do you approve for I?
You have a question.
But we got any for I?
For I?
So this should just be for electrical only. Ryan's still going to be doing everything else.
So this portion of the agreement or this agreement with Safe Build is for electrical inspections only. And then I'll still be doing all the other inspections in the city. Until around January fifth.
Is this temporary? Is this permanent?
It's electrical will be permanent until we find a replacement. And then once we find a replacement, we plan on having that replacement pick up and do everything.
Yeah, and Safe Build is a company that we've worked with in the past. So I felt confident in their abilities to slide in and do electrical inspections for us.
Is there anything in this agreement that we need to amend to make it? Say only electrical or? Uh, yeah, I mean, if you want it, yeah, I mean, we can send that back to them and let them know that it's just for electrical, but they should be under that. So we can make that motion and it can be crafted from there to?
So it's the same agreement. Um, I have the emails to show that it's the same agreement from the first time that we asked to have specifications in it. For just electrical, but. They don't have one kind of based on that. So it's my notifications to them to do the electrical inspections and things like that. So that's kind of how it's organized. So I don't. Again, it'd be Aaron's recommendation, but I don't think you need to do. A verbiage change on it or anything like that.
Uh, I mean, if they're willing, I think so. Schedule A is where it talks about the scope of services to be provided. Um, it is pretty all, it is all encompassing and so I think either. Just limiting it to electrical or um, at least adding language that at the request of the city.
Oh, okay.
I think you could do it that way, just only the services that are requested by the city.
Okay. I can email him and ask him to make that change.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve it with adding language at the request of the city.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
I added this to the end. If you'll scroll down to item seventeen, it's separate. And should be pinned in.
Look at you.
Sorry.
Approved.
Scroll back up.
Now we'll move on to the public forum. Time says I have comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Brendan?
Good evening, Mayor Canton and the Nevada City Council. I've got two items to share this evening with you all. Uh, on Wednesday, December third, um, we will be celebrating the ground. Official groundbreaking for the Sierra Heights project now. Uh, we're watching the weather. It sounds like things for Saturday and Sunday are being extended a little further, so. Uh, stay posted. Uh, it won't be a long little celebration, but certainly we want to kick off officially. Uh, their investment in the community of Nevada and celebrate. Uh, again, assuming whether we are going to offer a bus, a short little bus tour over to Boone. Um, Kate's Landing is a similar project in Boone and we wanted to give folks. The opportunity to tour that facility before they actually. Uh, get their occupancy permit and start moving people in. So. Um, that's an option as well for that day, assuming that that event moves forward. So. Hope uh, some or all of you can join us uh, to celebrate that project on Wednesday. The actual event itself is at nine thirty and so mayor, if it works in your schedule, we'd love for you to make a few comments. So. Uh, the next item, while not nearly as exciting as winning a state championship in football, so. How exciting uh, for the community of Nevada. I'm also excited to tell you that the community of Nevada has been selected for the, uh, one of the twenty twenty five. Alliance Community Impact Awards and so. Um, we are uh, excited to share that your Oak Park Estates Trail Project is. Being recognized as a community impact and so um, we'll actually officially. Uh, give those out in January, but we'll start promoting uh, that to the region uh, here in the next few weeks. So. Uh, congratulations on a fabulous project. I've had the opportunity to see all ends of that project going. I dropped off a. A little celebratory box to Rhonda when I came in and certainly the parks and recreation and trails. And the quality of life initiatives that are going on in, in the community of Nevada. It's fun to. Celebrate alongside of you and certainly do some public recognition about that fabulous project. So. Uh, stay tuned, but again, congratulations Rhonda and your team. And of course, the mayor and council and the staff are supporting that project. So have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Brendan. Emily?
Emily Shack, Main Street Nevada, uh, council. I just wanted to come this week of Thanksgiving and tell you all thank you for everything that you do. Um, not only for the city, but I know that all of you are involved in plenty of other organizations in the community too. So. Um, thank you for all that you, that you do for Nevada. Main Street Nevada receives compliments every week, whether it's an email, phone call, or someone stopping into our office. We constantly hear positive feedback from residents and visitors alike. Just last week, I took a call from an older gentleman in Ames who said Nevada has a lot of good going on. You should all be really proud of the work you're doing. He specifically mentioned our housing projects, parks and rec facilities and the school. He's right. We do have a lot of good going on and we should all be very proud of it. Three years ago, when I became the executive director of Main Street Nevada, there were three big items on the board of directors wishlist. Wayfinding signage around town, creating a gathering patio in the alley to begin developing underutilized spaces and a downtown mural. All three of those things were completed this year. Thank you to the city for helping with the signs. Leadership Nevada and all the sponsor businesses who helped with the patio project and the Public Arts Commission for helping us get the ball rolling on the mural. Hopefully you've all read the story on the Main Street Nevada website about the gentleman who grew up in Nevada in the forties. Um, and donated money that was used for the mural. He too was very proud to be from here. We all have the twenty twenty five impact report in front of you, but I'd like to highlight a couple of things from it. First, we've hit the three million mark, three million dollar mark on private investments in our downtown district. We have building owners who are taking pride in their historic buildings and wanting to preserve and show them off. Even small improvements like new signage show that our owners are proud of their space and help drive traffic into their business. Our largest event that brought people into Nevada this year was the wall that heals, seeing over ten thousand visitors. While they didn't all spend money while they were here, we heard an abundance of compliments from them about our beautiful score park and the hospitality we provided during their short visit. We know many of them will be back to check out the rest of the town. The keynote speaker at our annual meeting last week encouraged us to get loud about the good things happening in Nevada and be proud of where we live. Main Street Nevada looks forward to doing more of this in twenty twenty six. Goals for us next year include encouraging our thirty four hundred daytime visitors to spend more time in our local businesses. Create more signage to our downtown district, re-energize the farmer's market and graduate another successful leadership Nevada class. We look forward to our continued partnership with the city. Thank you again for all you do.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public forum? Staying none, I'm gonna close the public forum. Moving on to item six, resolution accepting the wastewater treatment facility phase four project is complete.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item seven. Approved pay request number twenty for wastewater treatment improvements, phase four for montrak construction, the amount of seven thousand two hundred eighty dollars and five cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item eight. Ordinance number ten seventy and ordinance amending chapter fifty of the Nevada municipal code nuisance abatement procedure to declare storage uses on the first floor of multi-story buildings in downtown corridor. District A, public nuisance, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item nine, ordinance number ten seventy one and ordinance amending chapter one forty five of the Nevada municipal code, dangerous buildings. With regard to storage uses which may create a fire hazard, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item ten, ordinance number ten seventy two, ordinance amending chapter one sixty five of the Nevada municipal code, land development zoning regulations. To prohibit storage uses on the first floor of multi-story buildings in the downtown corridor district, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item eleven, ordinance number ten seventy four and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand and six by amending provisions pertaining to sewer use charge base, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item twelve, ordinance number ten seventy five and ordinance amending chapter one sixty five, land development. Zoning regulations of the city code to update off-street parking requirements for streeting. Any discussion?
Give us a quick background of why we're changing those. Yeah, so for a while now, sometime Ryan and I have been discussing updating these and changing these just because we have a lot of uh, buildings and. Older buildings that are out of, out of compliance, which this has nothing to do with that because we're. Every, everything that was built in the past doesn't need to. Take part in, in all of this. So, yeah, they're all grandfathered in unless they change the actual use, use of that facility or that house. So. Or whatever it may be. So nothing will change with that. But a lot of this discussion started with all of the big parking lots that we have in our community. And the lack of usage for that USDA Dollar Fresh. Just to name a couple. Uh, and then we've, we've just been looking at other, other communities really around our size and seven thousand, uh, seven thousand population range as well as the eight thousand population range and. And comparing those and looking at everything and. Um, that's why we decided to update it and change. Ryan, did you want to say anything?
Uh, yeah, we, we took a deep dive into it. Uh, some of our uh, ordinances for the parking wasn't specified as far as. Um, residential things like having, you know, two bedroom, one bedroom, studio apartments, things like that. So it, it broke it apart and, and based it upon those items. Thank you.
Will this apply on houses converted to apartments?
My current ones? No.
Out, so I buy a house tomorrow. Is the new parking requirements?
I'm gonna have you guys on the microphone just so we can catch you on the.
Ever me?
Yes.
Uh, both.
So. If you don't, I'll go first if you don't mind. Yeah, so Shane's question was, is if he purchases a single family home. Tomorrow will, and then changes it to apartments, correct? Something like that?
Yeah, a rental.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So I buy a single family home and rent it.
Right.
Will it fall under the new guidelines?
So. I don't believe it will because it stays single family residential. Now, if that home was purchased, we have a lot of. Older homes that are converted into like, you know, duplex, three-bedroom apartment or, you know, three apartments, four apartments, things like that. That would be changing the use of it, right? It would no longer be a single family home. Then it would fall into how many apartment uh, there are as well as bedrooms in there. So that's why. Prior to that, the ordinance would read that anybody with an apartment, whether it be two-bedroom, one-bedroom. Or studio, they all fell onto the two point five parking stalls, which. Is a lot. Um, the big cause besides having the oversized parking lots for a lot of commercial. And residential things is um. Moving away from that to try and protect our green space as, as we can. So.
So yeah, it's our understanding that it would not.
So the only follow-up I have to that is so my duplex goes from two and a half to now three. So all these parking requirements you're making. Larger, but yet you've been over backwards for the hospital to give them no parking. That, that's kind of how it is.
Does your duplex have garages?
No.
No.
Go ahead.
But what I'm saying is you're, you're adding all these parking requirements to stop going on. Now. Or in the future, but yet you just bent over backwards to give them. Minimal parking requirements that don't even fulfill the code that we have now. So how do you, so how do you justify turning around and adding all this additional parking to stuff? Going forward?
Well, there's a variance that. Gave the hospital the required parking that they wanted. It wasn't the city.
Right, but they've never granted that variance in the past, ever. Never.
I think Ryan can speak on the variances that were passed and.
Well, I just, I, I'm confused. I don't understand. So can I get a variance on, on my property? That's. So, so can I get away from these new parking requirements that you want to put in?
So I'll jump in real quick. So technically, when you're asking about your duplex that you have. It depends on bedrooms again, right? One bedroom, two bedroom, things like that, but. Since you own it now, it's not changing what it, what it currently is, is a duplex to be something different. Yours is not going to get. Uh, yours is grandfathered in for the lack of terms. Uh, the long-term care facility that's being um, reconditioned into the apartments. Applied for a variance and went through the process. I know that you're saying that. In the past, that the variances have never been granted for parking and things like that, but.
They, they haven't actually. I was told I couldn't even ask for a variance when I asked for a variance in the past.
I can't.
No, I know.
Yeah, I can't speak to the past, but if you, if you read the code. You're allowed to ask for a variance. Uh, the state just changed this past July and the fact that you can ask for a variance now. And not have to show a catastrophic or a mon, a larger monetary loss. Uh, that's, that's initially what the variance was set up for was. You had to show that your property was no longer worth any value because you are not able to build or complete a project on that said land. And now they've knocked it down drastically to show that you have to show some sort of monetary loss, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, well, I mean, it used to be a hardship that would be required. Now it's just practical difficulties. The standard is different. I can't speak to the path either. I, I've not seen a request for parking variance.
No, I, I had asked in the past and I was told I couldn't even ask for one. That's why we have a property that didn't sit completed for quite a few years. But now that I know I can get a variance and we don't have to have barking anymore, then we'll just go that route.
Yeah, from what I sound, sounds like, sounds like standards have changed. So that's an issue moving forward. Apply.
I, like I said, I, I still don't really understand raising all these parking requirements. I mean, it, it seems a hardship to the rentals, to be honest, because there's a lot of houses in town that have more than four cars parked in front of them. And so you're, you're making your rental people a kind of a second-class citizen where they don't get to have four cars parked. But you know, Steve can have six cars parked in his driveway.
I think we're gonna go ahead and move on.
I think just something to thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item thirteen, discussion and appropriate follow-up regarding resource recovery plan.
So there's going to be a new twenty eighty agreement with the city of Ames that they've sent out to all of the communities in Story County. For the new resource recovery center. And with that, um, there is really, the major change is really the tipping fee for haulers. That's about a twenty dollar increase. Uh, per capita, so per citizen, it's not going to change. And that's. One of the things that is on your water bill is, is how we pay for that. Um. So really, I, I wanted to provide this discussion for the haulers. I, I know I see a couple of them in the room. Um, see if they had anything. I also invited. City of Ames here as well. Um. I'm assuming that's you back there. Okay. I, I've never seen you. I met you in person, so um. And kind of talk about it and share their concerns if they have any. And then also allow City of Ames to touch on that as well, but eventually we will need to vote on this twenty eighty agreement and. And move forward with it. Uh. The construction does start, I think it's next spring, right? And then it's supposed to conclude. In twenty twenty seven, and so that, that agreement is for twenty years. Our current agreement is for twenty years as well. Um, but wanted to share everything with the council and have a discussion about it and. Uh, that way we could get to the next step of that process.
Any comments?
Guess I just wanted to say, oh, I'm Gavin with Pratt Sanitation. Um. I don't think it's as simple as just the twenty eighty agreement because there's a lot of changes. Mark will. Uh, probably be able to address that a little bit more than. There's just gonna be a lot of changes with the garbage and waste in general. Um, recycling is going to be mandated. It's currently mandated, but we get away with it because of the current waste energy facility. It's mandated by the DNR. Uh, the city's gonna have to address recycling coming up in the future. Uh, basically as soon as that plant opens, correct? Uh, you have to have a plan in place for recycling. Uh, plenty of options there, but. My biggest thing, and I talked to Jordan a couple of weeks ago, is that I feel like the city needs to understand that. There's more options than just the city of Ames. I don't want to be looked at as one way or the other, but. I know there's some partner communities that are leaving that partnership. Um. Not necessarily going to say who they are or whatnot. You guys can probably figure that out. Um. There's positives of staying in Ames and negatives of staying in Ames. If you were to explore other options, um, tipping fee going up. Going to Ames, we just, we just dealt with the twenty percent tipping fee increase and they want, and we're gonna look at another twenty percent in two years. So. As haulers. We have to pass that cost on to everybody, whether that's residential, whether that's commercial business. Um, you know, if our costs go up, then. Then they go up and we have to pass that on. So, um. There's options out there. They, they, they come with the cost too. Um, just for instance, I know Marshall Town has accepted some requests from a couple of the partnering, partnering communities. Um, one thing that I recently found out about that particular situation is that. I didn't realize it even coming from Marshall Town originally before I bought Pratt Sanitation, uh, is that every partnering community. Uh, that is involved in the waste, the Marshall County Waste Planning Zone has a representative on their, on their landfill board and commission. You don't have that with Ames. City of Nevada has never had a vote with anything that they've done. So when those price increases come up. So when those price increases come up, they haven't been able to haven't had to have a vote. It's basically been the city of Ames telling you what you're gonna do, how you're gonna do it and where you're gonna do it. Again, I don't think it's a bad thing. It's just what we've always, you know, I mean, it's what we've always had to deal with. Um, but I I would say if you were to look at another waste planning zone, you would have in proximities, Marsh Town to your closest and then by Harden County would be the next closest after that. Um, but that's up for you guys to decide if you even want to look at it. So um tipping fees can be could be more, could be less. Um, I know Marsh Town's less. They they're they're at sixty two bucks a ton right now. Um, when you take out, when you think think about all the tonnage that that of garbage that we produce, that's a pretty big cost savings. Um, you know, and again, on our end, it's just it's a cost that we pass on to our customers. You know, so uh we could potentially avoid future price increases by making a change. Um, we know we're gonna have one. It's gonna be a pretty healthy one if we stay with Ames. So and and then and then on top of that, you have to add recycling service to that too. So you know, you're not just talking about tipping fees. You're talking about adding trucks to employees, all that stuff that we're all gonna have to do once all those changes, you know. You're not gonna have an option where it's just trash anymore. Uh, it's just the way it is, you know, so the the waste energy facility has been great. Uh, you know, for what we've used it as far as I'm concerned, but I just want the city to know that there's there's other options out there and I think you should explore them. So.
Do you know Marshall County requires any recycling as well?
Recycling is mandated by the D N R. Um. It's I believe it's thirty percent. They want to see landfill diversion of thirty percent. City of Ames gets away with it because the Resource Recovery Facility was, you know, burning the trash, creating electricity. So their landfill diversion rate was super high, seventy percent, something like that. Um, traditional recycling programs are targeting that twenty five to thirty percent, but the D N R mandate is is thirty percent. And then you have to show you have to show you have a plan. And then you have to show that you're improving on that plan, you know, year after year. So.
Regardless, I guess my question is regardless, will the city have to create a plan?
Some form of recycling will have to will have to be that you'll have to have a plan for recycling.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's what I was curious about because I mean, eventually we're the city's gonna have to do that and it's going to be an added expense number.
Yep, yep. And City of Ames does have a recycling option. I think that they're about to throw out at at some point if you want to step in there. So.
Yeah, so I I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to uh mayor, council and the community. Uh, so City of Ames appreciates the partnership that we've had longstanding. Uh, you know, we look forward to the future. Uh, but there is going to be a rate increase for the new facility. Uh, the tipping fees were at fifty two seventy five. I believe it was for ten or twelve years straight without an increase. Per capita went up and down during that time, kind of fluctuated a dollar or two dollars uh per capita, but uh, the new facility mandated uh recycling will be part of that. The city of Ames is uh got the guidance and direction from city council last week to go ahead and move forward with an R F P to go out for proposals for single stream curbside collection as far as paper, plastic, cardboard, glass, um metal, uh, to be able to go into one container, that commercial hauler would pick that material up from the curbside. Along with that R F P, it's written as such to where any of the member agencies for Story County that are in our twenty eighty agreement or plan to extend uh would be able to potentially piggyback onto that contract and uh that commercial hauler would provide that service as well. Not saying that uh Nevada would have to uh piggyback onto that contract, but the the pricing would be there and you could potentially take advantage of that to where everybody's not having to go out for an R F P separately. Uh, the other option, uh, rec- recycling, like uh Gavin said, is mandated. But with that, uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be single stream curbside collection to where if the the community wanted uh to have a container where it's single stream, where residents could take that material, put it into a container, and then that material could be hauled to our facility separately. Uh, not necessarily adding another truck to uh the the streets of Nevada, but the convenience is part of that, uh, curbside collection. Uh, we get great great participation, higher recycling numbers. And part of the the mandate with the city of, or sorry, with the state of Iowa and the D N R is there is a uh tonnage fee tax. So the more material that you divert from the landfill, the lower the amount that you pay for a fee. So it depends on if you're part of a comprehensive planning area uh to where that that kind of dictates it, you're you pay only by the diversion amount. The more you divert, the less you pay. Uh, otherwise, Carroll County is where we're looking at transporting that waste to for final disposition. They are in a murder uh environmental management system to where uh they are part of a program. They have all the reporting, the recording that goes to the D N R on an annual basis. And that shows the sustainability goals. And as long as you continue to uh increase your sustainability and landfill diversion, you pay a set fee which is lower than all the rest of them for a comprehensive plan. So as of right now, uh, it's looking like uh the city of Ames will also be an environmental management system. Whether we have our own within the planning area for the member agencies uh or if we join uh the Carroll County uh E M S. So yes, recycling is gonna be mandated. Uh, so one of the things that that we're really really excited about, uh, there's been a lot of changes. The city of Ames uh converted from coal fired to natural gas in twenty sixteen. With that, that uh took away the uh coal ash residue that created a a barrier on the boiler tubes. Uh, so now with natural gas, uh, obviously higher gas consumption and the prices, supply and demand, it's gone up. Uh, so it's not really cost effective to keep doing what we're doing. Both boilers are past the their useful life and need to be replaced with uh more efficient generation. But um as far as uh legislators legislative, regulatory and commission or emissions controls, uh, a lot of that went in twenty sixteen with the de- decision to go with natural gas instead of refu- or instead of coal fired. Uh, so with natural gas, there's a higher moisture content and the more plastics that come in that get combusted, it creates hydrochloric acid and it eats those tubes away uh at a in accelerated rate. Uh, so with that, that creates liability or reliability issues uh to where uh you we've got a the the tipping floor, we can only hold four hundred, four hundred fifty tons. The R D F storage bins, we can only hold two hundred tons, uh, which is about one day's worth of material uh that comes in from city of Ames in Story County. So once the R D F bins are full, our tipping floor is full and the power plant's not combusting R D F, we've got to divert that material to the landfill, which then uh that has a negative impact on the communities, our diversion rates and uh also the the commercial haulers. So with this new facility, uh, the higher tipping fees, that's operating and maintenance costs, uh, the transfer trucks, the disposal, uh, everything that goes with that, the tipping fees, uh, but the um the system is built to where it's redundant. Uh, we plan on still processing the material, recovering all the ferrous and non-ferrous metals out of that waste stream. And then the the rest of that material will take up less space in the landfill. And um no matter what happens barring uh a catastrophic event, uh, we should be able to handle the material and provide a consistent service to the community uh without having to divert any material. I don't know if that answered all the questions or if if uh there there's there's.
There's a lot there.
There's a lot there. Um, and so I mean, if anybody has questions, I can.
I do have a question. Since it sounded like one of the pro is listening to pros and cons about different entities being particip- you know, that we could research Marshall Town or Harden County. It sounds like one of the positives that might be missing is an advisory group that would be more than just the city council and the city administrator of Ames making decisions for this facility. Do you think that's a possibility?
Uh, so I I'm not going to say that it's not a possibility. Uh, the way the twenty eighty agreement is written uh currently is that the the city of Ames provides that service and lets uh each community know what those fees or um increase in fees would be uh or change in service. Uh, I I think that that would be a good idea, but uh the city's open for for uh comments. I mean, when we send out the annual report in February, uh, if we get feedback, we definitely take that into consideration.
I think it's a good idea.
And I I guess there's one other thing uh that I wanted to speak of and and in addition to the solid waste and the construction demolition material, there's all uh a lot of other materials that uh are received through the resource recovery facility as far as uh household hazardous materials, appliances, uh, C F Ls, light bulbs, tires, uh, sharps, uh, waste oil, antifreeze. Uh, so for for us, uh, that's a a service that we provide and that's per part of that per capita B as well.
Andy?
Along with the city of Ames?
I've been with the city of Ames twenty one years.
Okay, and and with resource?
Uh, twenty years.
Okay. I don't remember you, but I I think worked with you on the previous twenty eighty. Uh, I'm okay with Ames Resource Recovery. Believe it or not, we are commercial hauler six oh two. Among everything else I do, we're commercial hauler six oh two and Ames is is okay to deal with. We get over there. But I remember some uh stress on the agreement before and it is a it's a twenty eight E agreement for twenty years and we're not twenty years into it. And we didn't have any choices on it. It was signed it or not. And we looked at going with Marshall Town at the time because they were cheaper at the time also. And they take C and D waste, which Ames does not. Uh, so I I'm not saying going with Marshall Town is better than going with Ames. Ames is closer and I I get along with Ames. That's not a problem. But what Gavin said, having a seat at the table, it might be that they give out a status update and they wait for feedback, but we signed a twenty year agreement. We're not into twenty years. Uh, and it's it it not not by your fault. I understand by by regulations being pulled out from under us. We had an agreement. It it didn't last twenty years. So the agreement we had, I imagine if we needed to stick with it, we'd have stuck to the twenty. They don't have to. We we've had no seat at the table on it. And there's some nuts and bolts to this. I'm sure you don't care about, but when resources shut down as it has been this week, you divert. Uh, so you've got all the cost to go into Ames currently. And then you get the mileage going somewhere else and you still have to get rid of your C and D somewhere else. And it it looks like they're talking about taking some light C and D where it's at. Maybe it's a better deal, but Marshall Town takes everything as as an option. I'm not saying in any way we should go to Marshall Town. But I'd push really hard for a seat at the table because with an all or nothing sign signage before and it hasn't worked out tremendously well for us. And they they came to us and said we need a twenty year agreement to obtain bonding for financing for the improvements. If you want to participate, we need a twenty year agreement. And we did. We're not twenty years into it. I think it's uh I think it's reasonable to ask for a little bit more input from here on out.
Just to piggyback on the C and D, you guys are gonna be taking some light C and D, but along with that agreement with Carroll County, then when what C and D they don't take, that's all gonna be trucked to Carroll County, which is again, gonna increase costs for the city in Nevada. So every roof job that I do for my customer that right now I call to Boone County, now I gotta go another thirty two miles down the road, you know, so those trips instead of being sixty four miles are now a hundred and thirty two miles or whatever. It's seventy seventy one miles from Nevada to Carroll, I believe. So.
Yeah, and as far as the C and D goes, uh, the 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 new R three C facility, uh, we're planning on taking as much of the C and D as we possibly can, but there are some items that are false, uh, demo construction uh as far as concrete, uh, large items that damage the tipping floor or the walking floor trailers. Uh, that's the material that we're gonna look at diverting straight to the Carroll County landfill. But otherwise, we're gonna we're gonna do what we can to take the material.
It'd be less diversion, but there's still gonna be diversion. Yes, yep.
And four miles to get out, that counts.
Your trucks get four miles to get out? Yours?
I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know.
Two and a half?
Doesn't get much.
Have you?
Any other?
Are we just looking at this? This is just a discussion.
This is just a discussion.
I just want to make sure you're not like voting on this.
No.
But have you looked anywhere else? Have we opened this up?
I would be more than happy to reach out to other other county landfills and see if we're able to do that.
I generally take bids when I have work done.
Yep. Any other comments? So.
I will I will look into Marshall County and Harden. Is that what?
Harden's close. Um, I yeah, rural Iowa Waste Management. So I think, I mean, you could explore metro waste, but I think probably both of us would say that probably would be a bad idea.
And I want to change it. I don't want to hear.
I I like it too.
Yeah. Then I get questions from Green.
For me, whether what whether we if we go to Ames, it's an improvement over what we have. And I think Carl would say that it with the new facility, anything's an improvement over what we have. So for especially from a reliability standpoint. So but there's cost to it.
Yeah, and then that twenty that new twenty eighty agreement, uh, the current one would expire twenty thirty four. Uh, so this one would be is is what is being proposed is uh July first of twenty twenty seven through uh June thirtieth of uh twenty forty seven. So it's seven years early just due to the the changes and to match that debt service.
Okay.
Just learned a lot about trash.
I know.
Didn't know, so interesting.
No real motions, so we'll move on to item fourteen. Resolution number thirty, resolution saying dated of meeting of which is proposed to approve development agreement with midstates material handling and fabrication, including annual appropriation tax increment.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Approved? Okay, moving on to reports. Ryan, you still over there? You've been pretty.
Uh, I'm good. Unless you guys have any other questions?
Peace. I don't have anything.
Ronan?
Just wanted to give a quick update in regards to our uh Thanksgiving week this week. Uh, we did send out three hundred meals to families today. So worked with uh Jody Heron at the school to get that accomplished today. Uh, tomorrow we'll have our senior Thanksgiving luncheon. So just wanted to remind everybody that that will take place starting at eleven thirty. So any volunteers, if you want to show up around eleven, eleven fifteen, that would be wonderful. Uh, we have another about a hundred and seventy meals going out or dining in tomorrow at Memorial Lutheran Church. And also want to give a big shout out to South Story State uh Bank and Trust for their support for this uh this endeavor that we do each year. So that's all I have for an update.
Thanks, Ron. Yep.
Good evening. You're from the library. I decided to start um putting in your packets the monthly calendar. Um, I think that speaks volumes of the activities that we have at the library. That's what brings families and adults in to check out the books. Um, you'll see a large increase in our adult programs. Um. And I do have a shout out just Danielle. She did a great job at pivoting. We're supposed to have a adult movie last uh Friday and she uh pivoted to do a a viewing party for the game. And it turned out very well. Um, had quite a few people who came. Always want more, but you know, uh, there was a lot of viewing parties in town. And then one of the things that we are going to be adding after the first of the year is um some outreach to our senior living facilities, some programs. We're already doing home delivery services. Uh, but we do know that there is a need in our and our long term plan does specify that um we need to make that um a goal and make some action steps towards getting that to happen. Um, so we're looking forward to that. And then I will be back the first meeting in January with our annual report for the twenty four twenty five fiscal year. So. Any questions for the library tonight? We have it all decorated, so please come see us.
The calendar was great. Thank you.
You betcha.
I don't have. Don't be more report.
I think I see Derek here.
Uh, had a couple of meetings over the P F O S lawsuit that is going to be going on here pretty soon with several communities in the state of Iowa. Uh, met with uh. Uh met with uh a few people on the R three C or the re- recovery center. Went to the meeting that they had at the supervisor's location or the administration building. Uh two meetings with J E O, one regarding Lincoln Way Bridge. And then also the splash pad that we're proposing. Met with the E P A and talked with them about some of the. Things that were required to do now with the new facility. I talked with W H K S over several projects that we're going to be working on and. Putting into the next fiscal year roads and um. Some of the, you know, the sewer issues that we. Were gonna try to mitigate and then also talk with the Union Pacific over. That bridge project because they have to be involved and over for us to do that.
Anything else? All right, I don't have a lot to say. I think most of the town was over in Cedar Falls on Friday. Congrats to the guys.
Yeah, Amanda, don't take it personally. I think most of the people from Nevada were already up there.
Yeah. Right. And then move to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
On favor? Adjourned.